Tenure at AIDS Project Los Angeles. And this is the most entertaining and the most touching.
Yes.
They are, the humor and the sense of irony mixed with their life experience is just, and their knowledge.
Yes.
This is the other piece that I've come to understand is that the accumulated knowledge and experience of these folks is not highly regarded in our culture and in the gay community specifically. And so it's an opportunity for them to be able to articulate, to teach, and to get a sense and to hear themselves expand on their experience and the knowledge and the information that they do have. And it's a wonderful process to observe and to participate in.
Well, it's so important, the work you're doing. And I'm speaking as a parent of a gay son whom I love like crazy. And a piece of advice, if you'll allow me, if your child is gay, you love them and pay attention because you can lose them in a minute. Thank you so much, Richard. This has been a pleasure talking with you. And now it's time for Dr. Gil Kajiki.
Let's talk about vertigo today. Now, vertigo can be anything from room spinning to rocking side to side like a ship or dipping back and forth. Now, do you know what the number one cause of senior citizen deaths are? You might think it's heart attacks, you might think it's strokes, it's actually false. And why do you suppose people are falling? Because they lose their balance. They lose their balance because they can't feel their feet or the room is moving around. And so we're going to talk about some of these causes of vertigo, but vertigo is so diverse, any number of these mechanisms could be the reason why you're having vertigo. Now, your vertigo can come from internally in your brain or it can come from the outside, which is your ears. Now, most commonly, it does come from your ears. It's called BPPV, benign positional proximal vertigo. That's the most common one that there is, and it's usually the easiest one to take care of. But when that one can't be taken care of through traditional medicine, then we're talking about what we call a central vertigo problem, meaning it's inside your brain. And here's the most likely place that your vertigo will occur. On the backside of your brain here is called your cerebellum. You have a right cerebellum and you have a left cerebellum. Now, the cerebellum is so important that it's responsible for your balance, coordination, how clearly you think, and all the spinal muscles from your neck down to your lower back. So many times we'll find that people have accompanying neck problems with this vertigo, then we know it's probably a cerebellum problem. And this cerebellum needs to be recalibrated every so often, otherwise it doesn't know what different parts of the brain are functioning. And very often we find that this is where this vertigo comes from. When it can't be taken care of through medication and it can't be taken care of through traditional methods, we find that this cerebellum is the key to this vertigo. And we've got different therapies called brain-based therapy in order to help this cerebellum. Now, once again, we talked about blood sugar in the past. Blood sugar is one of the reasons why this cerebellum goes bad. The brain hates blood sugar fluctuations. So by controlling your blood sugar, that one thing alone can help with your vertigo. The other thing is, you've got to watch the bottoms of your feet. If you can't feel the bottoms of your feet, you're not going to be able to know where you're walking, and the likelihood is, you're going to have a fall. So this vertigo can come from a number of different ways. But get your blood sugar checked out, get your feet checked out, make sure you can feel your feet. If those two things are in check, then we're talking about a central problem, and perhaps we can help you with that problem by getting your brain checked out and look for the functionality of your brain.
We'll be back later to continue this discussion with AIDS Project Los Angeles. But right now, I'd like to acquaint you with some city services that can be quite helpful. The message now is from the Department of Sanitation.
I am Naseed Kakarala with the City of Los Angeles Bureau of Sanitation, Citywide Recycling Division. Today I will talk about sharps and how to properly dispose of sharps. Sharps can be needles, lancets, other such devices the residents use at in-home settings to either self-administer medications or to monitor their health. So residents who use sharps are encouraged to use what are called sharps containers. A sharps container is one, it's puncture resistant, it's rigid, and it can be tightly sealed. See, once you seal it up, sharps don't come out of there. We have these at Department of Reckon Park senior centers, at pharmacies, and other participating locations. So a resident would come into the senior center and take a sharps container home, put their sharps in there. So once the sharps container is full, the resident would bring their tightly sealed sharps container to a drop box that looks something like this. They would get the key from the center and open it up and wrap it in there. For more information, seniors can go to our website, www.lacitysan.org. That is L-A-C-I-T-Y-S-A-N dot O-R-G. Or call our 1-800-NUMBER, 1-800-98-toxic, 9-8-TOXIC. Thank you.
That is great news from the Department of Sanitation. And now it's time to hear from Brenda Barnett from the Department of Animal Services.
What I'd like you to know, if you're going to adopt an animal from Los Angeles Animal Services, is that that companion animal is going to be spayed or neutered before you take her home or him home. We also will have given the vaccines that are appropriate up to that age. So you'll come with an animal, and you'll get a free vet certificate to go for a vet check with one of our local licensed veterinarians to make sure everything is A-OK with your companion animal. So those things are all included. Also for seniors, there are fee reductions for seniors who have income levels that qualify. So there's a number that's rolling across your screen, and that's the number that you call to find out more of the details. We have reduced adoption fees. In some circumstances, you can even get a free dog license. So call us, come on down, we've got love just waiting for you.
Hold on, we'll be right back.
An emergency can happen at any time.
Earthquake!
That's why you need to be prepared. Put together an emergency kit with food, water, a first aid kit, a flashlight, radio, and some tools.
Careful, it's an earthquake!
You're never too old to prepare.
Ah, it's a house!
Get the message? Be prepared.
It's a house!
You think it can't happen to someone like you? Are you crazy? It could happen to anyone.
No one can save your life, nor the life of someone you love.
Hey, it's free. It's painless and easy. Don't be scared. Just get tested.
No for sure. Get an HIV test now.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Today we're at the offices of the AIDS Project Los Angeles headquarters. And our next guest, I think you'll enjoy talking with her, is Sherry Dunn.
Yes.
Dunn with double N's.
Double N.
Thank you so much for making time to come in and talk to us. Now, what is your role here at APLA?
I'm a nurse case manager. I go out to see people in the community, anywhere in Los Angeles County, to see those persons who need case management, who are primarily homebound, who need to be connected with services in L.A. County.
Right. Oh, boy. And that can mean anything, from transportation to...
Housing, to attendant care, mental health services, working with various departments throughout L.A. County.
Wow, that's fantastic. Now, what is your reception? Some people are so reluctant to seek help, yet by the time you've come in, they've kind of, they've asked for your help, right?
Well, sometimes it's very difficult for people to receive strangers into their homes. Sometimes it's very difficult to admit that you need help and that you're allowing someone to come in and assess your medical status, your psychosocial status, and to refer you to various resources. A lot of people like to do things on their own, and you know, and that's great. But there are times when someone is at the point where they can't do it by themselves, they really don't know how to access some of the resources in L.A. County because the phone trees are very difficult to negotiate, and they don't know how to access these things.
Right, and that's assuming that they have admitted to themselves, I have a problem.
Right.
There's too many people that just, they don't pick up the phone. And yet here, APLA is right here for people, and we'll listen, and you and the team are vastly experienced. I mean, nobody's going to throw a surprise at you at this point, I hope.
No, I don't think so.
It's amazing how this drama, HIV/AIDS, has played out over the, firstly, the way people were treated as if they were lepers.
Right.
And then there was sort of an awakening within the culture, and acceptance, and great medical advances. And these medical advances, just to get to the right point, has meant that many people are living longer with AIDS.
Right. And with living with AIDS also comes the usual diseases that come with aging.
Yes.
Such as diabetes, high blood pressure, you know, heart disease, cancers, you know, a myriad of diseases. So not only do we manage people who have HIV and AIDS, but also the comorbidities that come along with that.
Yes.
Because some of them are highly related, in addition to things such as hepatitis B and C.
Sure. That has stalked the community for ages. And those darn dirty needles. Oh my God. How about drug use among seniors living with AIDS? I mean, they're on so many meds anyway. Is there, is that a particular issue that you need to address sometimes to say, I think you need to talk to someone?
Well, I think that in any segment of the population, there are people who use drugs.
Yes.
So it doesn't matter if we're talking about an adolescent, to young adult, to seniors, it happens. So yes, it's true, because some of our seniors have lived through the primary epidemic, and they were doing drugs all along the way, and they're still there on them.
Yes, that's true enough. How about the volunteer base? Are you finding that the seniors are willing to share their stories and their history to the younger gay community?
Well, I would have to say that a lot of the seniors that I see are pretty much homebound, so they don't get out too much. It's very difficult for them to negotiate traffic, and transportation resources are limited in L.A. County. I think that some of the criteria to access some of the access services, for instance, make it very difficult for some of our seniors to be able to get around. And frankly, you know, I'm not really sure that the younger population learns from the older ones, you know?
It is amazing. I joked with you earlier that it seems every five years you have to repeat the message all over again.
And I think with the advent of the medications, people began to live longer. But there was also a concern that some of the newer, some of the younger guys that were coming through the epidemic thought that all they had to do is take the meds and everything would be just fine.
Yeah, and not modify their behavior.
And not modify their behavior. And the thing is, is they didn't really see their friends die of HIV or AIDS-related illnesses, and so they, they just thought somehow that wasn't going to happen to them.
Well, yes, we all believe we're immortal when we're young, that's for sure.
Yes.
But when you're facing a knee replacement, how is this going to work with the drugs that I'm already taking?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the kind of stuff you see now?
Oh, yes.
Sure.
We see all sorts of different problems with people trying to negotiate diabetic-related issues and loss of sight, along with their HIV, the needs to take their meds, you know, how can you take your meds if you can't really see the meds that you're taking?
And I'm sure that sense of being overwhelmed is profound, actually.
Yes.
But the good news, as you've shared with us, is that help is available.
Right.
And you're exactly the kind of person that can knock on the door and say, hello, I'm Sherry.
Well, you know, the interesting thing is, is that with the senior population, we have to engage them in a way so that they feel safe with us.
Yes.
And I think that having case managers who have a great deal of experience, you know, working in the home and with this population helps them to be at ease.
I can see why. Sherry, thank you so much for taking time to share with us.
No problem. Thank you.
We'll be right back. And now it is time for Caregiver's Corner.
As a family caregiver, good communication is very important. It's important that you say and hear what each other have to say, whether it's the family, whether it's the care receiver, or even the professionals that you're working with when you're dealing with doctors and other providers of programs and services. So one of the more important things to do is remember that when you're communicating, that you talk in a way that you will be heard instead of shut down. If you're complaining and whining, people tend to tune that out. But it's more important that you just convey what you need. Also, it's very important to remember the difference between what we call "you" messages and "I" messages. If the message says something more like, you're always late, that sounds blaming and starting a fight. But if you say something like, I need to be on time, or I really like to be on time, that's more of what your needs are. If you say things like, you never listen to me, versus, I need to be heard, this is what I have to say, it just changes the whole tone of the conversation. So remind you of the importance of communicating effectively without blaming and without being turned off. When you communicate effectively, it helps to also build relationships. Why? Because everyone feels that they're having a chance to say what's on their minds. It's important that everyone communicate. Building relationships will make it very successful in order to be a better caregiver, not only for the care receiver, but for the entire family. It also will make you feel better because you feel you're being heard. It releases stress and makes sure that things don't get overwhelming. So practice using "I" messages rather than "you" messages so that everyone can thrive.
Time for Seniors on Aging. Today the question is, what's it like growing old in Los Angeles?
My name is Ignacio Garey. Getting old in Los Angeles and getting old in the world is the same. You've got to take it one day at a time. You have to not worry about everything and just be yourself and be good to others and treat others the way you wish to be treated. You can be nasty one day and nice the other. Life is a circle. And what you do will come back and bite you in the behind. You have to treat life like it is, something special, something to cherish. You wish it would go on, but sometimes the door closes. Take it one day at a time, just take it as it comes. And you know, it'll come back the way it should be. I mean, I'm 70 years old now. I didn't expect to get over 30. So, you know, that's the way it is. I'll be tired, and that's a whole ball of wax. That's it.
That's all the time we have for today's show. I want to thank the people of AIDS Project Los Angeles for opening their headquarters to us, and I hope you enjoyed the show, some good information from all of us at the Department of Aging on Paul Peterson saying, see you next time.
has exemplified true public service and has been an outstanding leader in the deaf and hard-of-hearing community.
My name is Michael, and I work in the office of the mayor in the Municipal Community Service Department.
I was born in Boston. When I was about five years old, we came to Los Angeles, and I've been here since. I live in South LA, close to Watts and Compton. I always believed that to help the fellow man, and growing up and thinking of a way to help other people, and I felt like coming here and seeing people, to see that of my abilities, that people can do this work, that I can change some situations and the city's needs. Just naturally, I love to help people. I just always love to help, always give back to my community. Two things, the sunshine, yes, and the people that I love live here. I think that most people don't understand or haven't been exposed to the deaf culture. As soon as they understand where we're coming from, it's easier. Again, I'm very lucky that I'm here, and I started as a volunteer, and I got my experience, and I developed, and developed my skills. I felt that the people that gave me the chance and opportunity, they will give other deaf people, other deaf and hard-of-hearing people the chances of that. That they can't talk, or they're not very smart, or they can't communicate, I feel that's wrong. I think most people are aware of how to, again, it's all about being open-minded and inclusive. And if you know that, those problems are easy to solve. I always loved Kennedy, President Kennedy. I know from many people, he said this quote that always impacted me. He says, "It's not ask what your country can do for you, it's what you could do for your country." And that quote has inspired me. I think one of the coolest things is to see everyday people here working for the people, and you see how much time and commitment people give to try to solve problems, whether they're small or big. I would like to say, in the deaf community, you can do anything except hear. Really more of believe in yourself. And I think that if you work hard, work your best, and people will see that, they appreciate what you're doing, they'll give you more opportunities, and you can become successful. What's important is education, practicing, motivation, perseverance.
Hi, my name is Michael, and I'm a Facebook fan.
Hi, I'm Trenton Erwin, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.[1428.25]
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 17th, 2011. Don't forget that today is Election Day. If you haven't gone out and voted, there are elections on school board, congressional races, Community College District as well. So be sure to get out and vote if you are in any of those relevant areas, and I believe the Community College District is for everybody in the city, so polls will stay open till 8 o'clock today. Thank you to those council members who are here on time, Councilmembers Han, Laban, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, and Zine. We are awaiting the rest of the council. Councilmembers Alarcon, Cardenas, Wizar, Coetz, Krikorian, Parks, Perry, and Wesson. They'll please join us as soon as possible so we can begin the meeting. In the meantime, our agendas are made available 72 hours in advance for the public, 24 hours in advance for any of our special meeting items. Those are posted throughout city buildings and available online as well at lacity.org. We also have those agendas split into items that have had public hearings and those for which public hearings have not yet been held. If an item has already had a public hearing committee, it won't be automatically triggered by a card from the public, though items that have not yet received a public hearing will automatically be triggered for one by a card from the public. We also have a section of the meeting for general public comment, that's for items not on today's agenda, but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city. And you can fill out a speaker card and speak for two minutes at the podium and to the council during our general public comment. We are available not only live here in person, but also in our two remote facilities, in Van Nuys City Hall, and also in San Pedro City Hall, if that's closer to where you live. And also, we are available on Channel 35 through the city's cable system, and on the internet at lacity.org, and through your telephone at 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. With that, thank you again to those council members who are here on time. We're awaiting the following council members who are late, Councilmembers Alarcon, Cardenas, Coetz, Krikorian, Parks, Perry, and Wesson. We are at eight members and need two more to constitute two-thirds of our body or our quorum, and so we appreciate your patience while awaiting those late council members. We should begin shortly. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wesson. We are now at nine members, awaiting Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Coetz, and Mr. Parks. We do have ten. Please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Wizar, Coetz, Krikorian, Laban, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcia, 11 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Rosendahl moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Communitary resolutions.
All right, Mr. Laban moves, and Mr. Krikorian seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. If we can go to the next order of business. On Tuesdays, we salute the flag. If I can ask everybody to please rise for a pledge of allegiance, and if I can ask Mr. Reyes to lead us?
Everybody please stand, right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. If we can run through the agenda now for any items that you wish to call special colleagues, if you can direct your attention to those items called special. First items, please.
Items one through five are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right, we have only 11 members, I'm told. One on the desk for that. Anybody wishing to open the public hearings on any of these items? We have Ms. Perry now, so we can put her in. Any one through five specials? All right, if not, go ahead, take those up together. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items six through 11 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
All right, if there's no objection to consideration, please open the roll. Sorry, we have cards on... We have continuation on number eight?
Yes.
All right, let's go ahead. Continue item number eight, five through 20, until 5/24. If there's no objection to that, we'll continue item eight until the 24th. Other specials, items six through 11, colleagues? Do we have any cards on any of these items?
No cards.
Okay, we'll close the public hearings. If there's no specials, and we do have twelves on item number one, we can also vote. Please open the roll on those items together, close the roll and tabulate the vote. Mr. Cardenas, serious one.
Thirteen ayes.
Ms. Perry?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I wanted to call two special justices.
Okay, we can say that in just a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Next items, please.
The seven forthwith.
Seven?
Seven.
All right, next items are 12 and 13.
Next items are 12 and 13 are items for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Mr. Parks, any guidance on items 12 and 13?
From my perspective, I would recommend on 12, open session, and also the same for 13.
Okay, let's go ahead. Anybody wishing to go into closed session on items 12 or 13? If not, let's go ahead and go through the settlements on 12 and 13, please.
On item 12, the recommendation is to authorize the city attorney to execute the settlement agreement in the case entitled Palmer's Sixth Street Properties LP versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney?
And for the record, the settlement agreement contains mutual releases. Neither party will pay anything to the other, and the proposed settlement agreement contains no performance obligations on the city's part.
Okay, go ahead and prepare the roll on 12. Yes, Mr. Krikorian?
Because I don't have it.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to even give them.
Okay, then I'd like to hold that.
Okay, let's hold 12 on the desk. And is that also for item 13? Do we have the packet for 13 as well? Or has that already been distributed?
Yeah, they're both in here. Want me to just pass these?
Okay, yeah, we'll get those out. Why don't we hold both those on the desk till those are passed out? If we can go to the supplemental agenda, please.
On the supplemental agenda, items 14 and 15 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are... Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, if there's no objection, those are before us. Mr. Parks?
Number 10 forthwith.
Okay, we'll send 10 forthwith as well. On 14 and 15, do we have any cards on these?
No cards.
Okay, we'll close the public hearings on those. Anybody wishing to call 14 or 15 special? 15, Ms. Perry?
Yeah, 15.
All right, so let's take up the roll on 14 if nobody wishes to call that special. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen, fifteen ayes.
Fifteen ayes on that?
Yes.
That will be approved. It'll take us to our general public comment. Our first speaker is Jack Allen on general public comment, and then Richard Kearns will follow.
Mr. President, would I kind of follow? If I could have 14 go forthwith?
14 forthwith, you got it.
Good morning, I'm Jack Allen, President of the Palisades Preservation Association, also a member of the Community Council. Last week, a Pacific Palisades citizen called the police to report that a child molester had just grabbed his child off the street and had dragged him into a house. Because the patrol officer assigned to the Palisades had been required to go to the West Los Angeles Police Station so the watch sergeant could talk to him, another unit in West LA had to be dispatched. It took that officer 25 minutes to arrive at the scene. That is because LAPD uses the same deployment scheme that the Fire Department now wants the City Council to approve. The problem with the deployment scheme is that it is a one-shoe-fits-all plan that fails to take into consideration the special circumstances that some communities face. The fire chief proposes to take one engine away from Fire Station 69 in the Palisades. That takes away a pumper that will be needed for brush fires and the only truck that has the jaws of life. Getting a backup will be difficult because the Palisades is connected to Los Angeles only by Sunset Boulevard and PCH, and most trucks must travel at least seven miles to get to Palisades. PCH is heavily congested now due to a loss of a lane because the city is installing a storm drain system between Temescal Canyon and Santa Monica Pier, and the lane will not be available for the next two years. At the same time, Santa Monica is going to close another lane off to rebuild the California Incline. PCH now is a moving parking lot during peak hours and on weekends, so it's not going to get any better. So these are special circumstances that make the redeployment plan unworkable in the Palisades. Approving the Fire Department deployment plan is a penny-wise, pound foolish.
Thank you, Ms. John.
So we urge you not to approve the redeployment plan and the budget unless it's modified to keep Engine 69 in the Palisades intact.
Thank you, sir. Richard Kearns is our next speaker. After that is someone from Ayatsi Local 33. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, President Garcia, distinguished council members. It's been a while since I've had the opportunity to be here. My name is Richard Kearns. I'm a gay man with AIDS. I've had it... Well, I turn 60 next week. I've had it for something like 30 years, have been dealing with these issues. And according to my custom, there's a poem that I wrote for you that I haven't been able to give to you, so this is it. Woke up this morning wishing I'd thanked you the day before. Woke up this morning wishing I'd thanked you the day before. Let that old, bright dad climb on out without me. I'm not quite ready to go out the door. I'm never ready, you're never ready, we're never ready for the last encore. I'm never ready, you're never ready, we're never ready to be a dinosaur. I'm never ready, you're never ready, we're never ready for that old final sore, trying to get out of here without another big uproar. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to get out of here without another big uproar. I turn 60 next week, which means I can't stay in the assisted care that I live in, and I'm working with Councilmember Rosendahl's office to try and straighten this out. It's a citywide problem and an AIDS problem in this city. How are we going to take care of particularly gay men with AIDS who are living by themselves now, and it's been rough? We've lost a lot of people. How are we going to take care of ourselves? We need to make communities. We need to make assisted care communities, and this is what I'm proposing. And it's just really great to see you guys, so...
Thank you, Ms. Rosendahl.
Yes, I just want to do a shout-out to Richard Kearns. He's been a true treasure to us in Los Angeles. He's been an incredible advocate for what's right for gays people, especially those who are HIV. He's been a leader in the community, and we really appreciate everything you've been doing to provide leadership for everybody who's suffering with HIV. Bless you and thank you.
Thank you. Do you have somebody from Ayatsi Local... I'm sorry, it said Farmer's Field, so what's your name, sir?
Good morning, President Garcia, City Council. My name is George Blanch. I'm a resident of Burbank.
Thank you, George.
I work for Local 33. I'm a rank-and-file member, and we work in Los Angeles. We're union stagehands, and I am here in support of Farmer's Field. You guys did a wonderful job with Nokia and Staples, which we currently work at, benefits our families and the residents. We would continue your... We would wish to continue your support with the project of Farmer's Field. It'll bring a lot of jobs, and we hope to be end users with a contract. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you as well, appreciate it. Donna Perman is our next speaker in Van Nuys.
I'm Mr. Garcia in City Council. Anyway, last time I can try to tell the four unions in your best interest to vote yes for the 4% health care, with the health care going up 4% is reasonable. I'd like to know if they had two people in the household with one spouse voting yes, would the other get to cancel their health care and just come in on the other person and vote no, and hurting all the other employees who need... All the others they work with who need the 4%? I hope that's not the case. We need to have both people doing the 4% because that's... The health care's going up. It's 4% is not unheard of. It's not unreasonable. We need to get this behind us, not see the City Council for concessions for three years. Think of that. Isn't that worth 4%? I had the word from Councilman Parks on that, too. We need to stop the CRA. Our city services are being curtailed. We can't cut back on any fire trucks. I had a paper talking about cutting back Engine 73, but we don't know if that's true or not. We need all our city services to be fully staffed with proper equipment. Yes, proper equipment and all to be fully staffed. It's a lot more essential to have the city services than the CRA. We're a lot of them going to billions. Our city services are being suffered. Why is the amount allowed so small compared to construction? DWP, you need to start doing a little bit of helping along with the other city employees along... What they give, you should have volunteered to be able to, to have a smooth-running city be able to. You have to give concessions and sacrifices. Even their City Council up there gave some sacrifices. So the next step is DWP and of course the CRA. We need to cut down on the CRA. I don't care what they say, that it doesn't hurt city services. Look around us with the Fire Department losing everything right now, and the library still not... Still off.
Thank you, Donna. Luana Allard is our next speaker. After that is Richard Robinson. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Luana Allard, and I live in Hillside Village. We're in the northeast corner of the city where Station 16 and Station 47 are located. Our two stations service Cal State Los Angeles, University, Wilson High School, two middle schools, and six grammar schools. Each station is on a main thoroughfare that leads to downtown LA. Last Thursday, at our property owners' meeting, we had Chief Rueda and Battalion Chief Bowman at our Hillside Village meeting. We were told that it's the best budget that the Fire Department has to offer. Yeah, it's good for the chiefs, it's not good for the city. When I told the chief that he couldn't justify hiring nine civilians to form a goon squad, excuse me, internal affairs staff, he said it was cheaper than hiring... To hire civilians than to have battalion chiefs work overtime. There's something wrong with that budget. Why are they paying chiefs overtime? That's their job, their management. They should be exempt employees. They should not be getting overtime. There's days when they have to work 15 hours, there's days when they have to work three. It's not right. They need to cut their budget and look back and don't take it off... Don't settle your budget on the backs of the Fire Department and the public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Robinson is our next speaker. Brenda Herrera follows.
Mr. President, members, when in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them. A decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the Federation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with the... Now let me shorten this. Whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it's the right of the people to alter or abolish it. We know where that's from. So, CRA. The middle guy in the corporation here, in my estimation, who should be with Maida, what's his name, the guy who made off with all the money? Madoff. I'm not going to talk about the chicanery. I'm not going to talk about the nepotism. I'm not going to talk about the sycophants and parvans who sit around your office doors ripping off the people's money. Your Honor, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Brenda Herrera is our next speaker, and then Raymond Rios. Brenda Herrera is our next speaker, and then Raymond Rios.
Buenos dias, concejales. Mi nombre es Brenda Herrera, y yo vivo en Boyle Heights.
Good morning, council members. My name is Brenda Herrera, and I live in Boyle Heights.
Concejal Wizard, gracias por todo lo que ha hecho en Boyle Heights.
Councilman Wizard, thank you for everything that you have done in Boyle Heights.
Varios residentes nos acabamos de enterar de la estación 17, que les quieren quitar sus troques.
As residents, we just found out that at Station 17, they want to take away the machines, two of the machines.
Esto sería algo impactante para la zona industrial.
This will be a great impact for the industrial area.
Que se siente segura porque ahí está la estación.
They feel safe because they have the station there right now.
Con los troques especiales.
With the special trucks.
Como yo y los demás residentes.
Myself and other residents.
Que vivimos en apartamentos de dos pisos.
We live in a... Two floor apartments.
Que son varios.
There are several of them.
Como Colonia Jesse Lopez.
As the Jesse Lopez Colony.
Rio Vista. Whitewood Wood, que es donde yo vivo.
Rio Vista and Whitewood Wood, that is where I live.
Estrada Court.
Estrada Court.
Que está sobre la misma calle Olympic donde está la estación 17.
And it's over the same street Olympic where Station 17 is located.
En una emergencia, las pérdidas de viviendas como de propiedad serían mayores.
In an emergency, we could have a great loss of housing.
Por favor, no los quiten los troques.
Don't take away our trucks, please.
Ayer venimos a dejarles unas peticiones, y les traeremos más si es necesario para que nos ayuden.
We came yesterday to drop some petitions, and if we need to get more, we will do it in order to get help.
Muchas gracias. Dios los bendiga.
Thank you. God bless you.
Gracias, thank you very much. Our last speaker is Raymond Rios.
Good morning, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Raymond Rios, and I'm a resident of Hillside Village in El Surino. I'm here this morning to urge this council to please oppose any further reductions to fire and paramedic services within our city. It has already been confirmed that if this new electronic deployment plan goes into effect, that El Surino will lose more vital resources than many other areas of the city, and compound this with the fact that we are already at a disadvantage because we reside in the city's outer edge and only get assistance from one side of the city. This is not a fair system. It scares me to death knowing that if this electronic deployment system is accepted, that our lives will be balanced at the mercy of a numbers game. And if one's community doesn't get the call volume to warrant more resources, then the lives of that... Of its community are put in grave danger. Now, no one knows when they are going to get into an accident, when a heart attack may strike. Those incidents are unpredictable for the most part, but when they do occur, we as citizens need to have the assurance that we will have adequate fire and ambulance services available to us. Along with law enforcement, these are basic services that should not be touched to the point where lives of the citizens are put at risk. I think that it's truly terrible that these communities throughout the cities have to plead and beg for the preservation of such basic and foundational services. Over and over, I hear citizens from all over the city informing you that their... What their priorities are, and they include preserving an adequate fire and paramedic and police department. I'm sorry that our mayor has put this great burden and given you the dirty work and put it upon your shoulders, but they don't... But you don't have to accept this portion of the budget proposal. You can stand up to him and send it back with a clear message that the city's citizens are adamant about preserving these vital services. Your decisions on the proposed cuts will tell us whether you are more interested in saving money over the lives of your citizens in your district and this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll close our general public comment. Ms. Perry wanted us to reconsider item number two if we can... Oh, she's okay now? Okay, all right, we'll keep that then. We have items 12 and 13. The packets have been distributed. Mr. Cucurew, did you want to continue to hold those on the table? Okay. We have item 15 then, Ms. Perry? If you'd like to re-recognize on item 15. One five?
Please.
Fifteen.
Okay, thank you very much. On April 29, 2011, I introduced a resolution to oppose Assembly Bill 1027. The resolution states that the City of Los Angeles, through the Department of Water and Power, maintains full jurisdictional control over its generation, transmission, and distribution assets. I believe that AB 1027 seeks to undermine our authority to regulate our own utility assets and rate-setting authority and allow cable and service telecommunication providers access to publicly-owned utility poles and support structures, requiring that the Department of Water and Power follow strict rules established by a statewide governing body. Now, this resolution states that access of this nature poses a potential and significant safety, reliability, and system integrity risks, so I hope that you will all be able to join me in opposing Assembly Bill 1027.
All right. Any other members? Mr. Labange?
Ms. Perry, we all should. What made this city great is the people who went before us and the creation of many things. Our water and power department is independent. Because of that, we have our own generation, our own transmission, and our own distribution. If that is collapsed, it will weaken the city's ability to serve its people in the way that it has. So I call for an aye vote.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead on item 15, and please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, that is approved. Items 12 and 13 are the last ones on the desk. Okay, let's go ahead on item 12 if we can go back to that item, please. Mr. City Attorney, did you have any further words on that? Okay. Are there any questions on 12? If not, let's go ahead, prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
12 is approved, and we can go to item 13 next.
On item 13, the recommendation is to approve the settlement in the amount of $335,000 in the case entitled Mohamed Sanai versus the City of Los Angeles et al.
And for the record, those funds will be taken from this fiscal year's funds.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on 13 and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, that is approved. With that, next order of business, please. Yeah, 13 forthwith, please.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk.
All right.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on May 20 and to leave at 11:00 a.m. on June 14. Both for city business, a motion is required.
All right. That takes us down to how many? Takes us down to 11 members or... How many members does that take us down to that day? Sorry.
For Friday, May 20, it would take us to 11 members.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move that. Mr. Zine seconds, that excuse is granted. Okay, any other excuses?
I'm sorry.
I moved on that. The said a motion was required, so I moved, and Mr. Zine seconded. Without objection, that is approved, as is the other. Any other excuses?
That clears the desk.
Okay. Announcements, Mr. Labange?
This morning in Mr. Reyes' district, I got a chance to represent Mr. Reyes at the Blessing of the Bicycles program at Good Samaritan, where we honored our mayor, where he's got the Golden Spike Award. Excuse me, that goes back in my brain for history. The Golden Spoke Award. Spike was for the Palmetary Point in Utah when the railroads came again. With that being said, light drizzle, but a wonderful way to see the city. I was able to ride my bike this morning, which is good to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mr. Parks?
Tomorrow, as part of our agenda, we'll have the budget hearings, and I would just ask for colleagues, you and your staff, if you look at that committee report and you look at particularly the attachments and instructions to give you some idea of a lot of the questions that were asked during the committee that have been assigned to the policy committee to go back and evaluate them so you get a sense of what came out of the committee in addition to what the changes are. And also, if I understand it, we're starting meeting tomorrow, Mr. Garcia, at 9:00. Tomorrow's at 9:00.
Sounds good. Tomorrow, 9:00.
Okay. Now, do we have a little slack on dress?
Tomorrow's a normal council day, so folks will be in standard attire. If we go into Thursday, which isn't a standard day, we can discuss that, but it's... We just replace the normal agenda with... But wear a comfortable suit.
Wear a comfortable suit, okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking. Yes, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I just like to remind everybody in Los Angeles, there is an election today. There'll be community college board elections, some special elections such as the congressional seat just southwest of where we're at today, the 36th congressional district. So just want to remind everybody that today is an election day. You probably haven't seen that much because it's not that much on the ballot, but exercising our right, our democratic right, is a responsibility and a privilege and an honor for those of us who have that right to participate in, so let's all vote today. Today's an election day. Vote your conscience, but get out there and vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just... Number 9 forthwith without objection as well. Also, folks, if you have motions that you would like for the budget tomorrow, the CLA, our chief legislative analyst has reminded me, please be in contact with the CLA's office to be drafting those ahead of time. It's tough to do the same day, especially if we want to vote on the budget tomorrow. Please have your staff or your office contact CLA's office today so they can be at work on that in preparation for tomorrow's deliberations on the budget. Mr. Labange?
Let's see that the trash cans that are...
Whatever it is.
Picked up, so write it up and then give it to a VAC.
Or just, yeah, just let them know what you want them to be drafted. Exactly.
I get his name.
All right. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, do we have any adjourning motions today? If I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our adjourning motions. I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that all members join me in adjourning in memory of Wilbur Eugene Smith, who is the father of our own Paul Smith, the CLA's office, who passed away in Pebblebees, California on May 12, 2011 at the age of 91. He was born in Red Willow, Nebraska, but grew up in Oakland, California. He's a graduate of UC Berkeley. He's also an officer in the U.S. Navy and served during World War II in the Philippines. Following that service in the Navy, he embarked on the successful career in municipal and regional government. He was instrumental in the formation of the Council of Governments in California and was the executive director of the COGS in Southern California, San Francisco Bay and Monterey Bay regions. He was preceded in death by his wife of 60-years-old Barbara. He survived by his sons, Paul Smith and Kevin Smith, five grandchildren, Daniel, Adrian, Ashley, Ryan, and David, and five great-grandchildren, Ellie, Max, Jeremy, Sabrina, and Audrey.
Thank you. We'll put all members on that. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. We'll next be in session tomorrow. That is Wednesday, May 18, 2011. We will be considering the budget for fiscal year 2011, 2012, so we will see you all then. This meeting of Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.